I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is being one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chancellor has a notice been posted for this.
Yes, it was posted in accordance with the law.
Ezra, do you have any private comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, then with that, let's go ahead and move forward with the chancellor's overview.
Come on up. So, board, what we're going to do, just a reminder that there is not a vote on this today over the budget. So this is a budget workshop. So that you'll have the opportunity to ask questions. And so this is about an hour presentation will be through by will be through of four or so. So the first four or five slides, I'm going to go overview and then Jennifer will handle the rest of it. But this is. So just as a reminder, and part of this is for the board, and this is a public meeting. So just how large we are. And the areas in the light blue are our service area. So they're not our taxing area. Let's go to the next slide. I wanted to remind the board kind of where we are with demographics and what you're seeing here is what we've been seeing the last couple of years. And I think that's going to be the trend. The Hispanic population is increasing roughly about a percentage point every year. And the Anglo population has been dropping. The black population has been holding pretty consistently. Now, these, this is a percentage of our enrollments. So all of our numbers before COVID were going up, and I think they're going to go up again. I'm going to give an update later, but we are up for the fall. And we're up for the summer. And you can also see that we're getting younger, which is a good sign. That means we've got more people coming out of high schools, coming directly to Lone Star. This is just our strategic plan. I just, we put this up here all the time to remind people what's important. It is about student success. We've been very consistent with this. So next slide. I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer.
Yes, thank you, trustees, again for, thank you for joining this afternoon. I know this is an earlier day than usual to meet prior to the regular board meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to go through with you in detail, the proposed budget for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2024. For this process, we usually kick off the process with you with the board in February at that board retreat that we did where we just present a very high level outline to get your initial thoughts. We did that in February and then from there, we spent a lot of work building this proposed budget over the these past few months. So before I really dive in, I do want to first say a huge thank you to the team. I have a few of them here. Maura Capper, Diana Garcia, Mary Anderson, Shelby Hart, Julie Ning, Stephanie O'Neil, Nissa Peterson. But also campus presidents, vice presidents of administrative services, budget teams. A lot of people throughout the entire college put a lot of work into building this proposed budget. We are, as Dr. Head showed, just from our service area, a large system. So when we build the budget, we have allocations that go out to the different campuses and vice chancellor offices, but from there, the different campuses and vice chancellor offices, business offices, all have to build their individual budgets. So it truly is a very collaborative effort across the whole system. So like I said, I wanted to say that huge thank you to everyone before I get into the next about hour's work.
Thank the staff. When some of us know how much work went on. I was telling the board, I just review it and it's wearing me out. I know you all are doing the work, doing the work at night and on the weekends, and you've been working on this and they've been giving up a lot of their personal time and we know that. So thank you. Also, just want to make sure for trustee Broussard in particular, for anybody where we have a review, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Yes. And with that, thank you. Certainly want to take also just a second to brag on Lone Star College to on the financial responsibility. We have been receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 19 consecutive years. So that certainly has had a lot of people long before me and a lot of people on the team that have all been contributing to this for a long time now. We've also been getting the past two years, the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award and the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas, the Certificate of Distinction for our investment policy. And last, but absolutely not least, we have a triple A rating from Standard and Poor's. So like a personal credit rating, that is the highest rating that an institution can have on that. So before I really get into the details of the budget, first, I like to try to help put everyone in Lone Star College in perspective, in comparison to our other community colleges across Texas. So as we look at the budget and look at the large numbers that is our budget, we have that context of where we stand compared to other community colleges throughout Texas. So all of these slides, they kind of have the same format. I call them my 50cc slides because each one shows all 50 community colleges for different metrics and where we rank. So starting with property taxes, taxable value. Our estimated FY23 taxable value is at 280 billion. Oh, that's this year. For next year, we're estimating it'll be 309 billion for that taxable value. We are the third largest taxable area among the 50 community colleges, and we've gone up. Last year, we were the fourth largest. So we are continuing to grow. And you can see here that there's sort of a pack of a handful of community colleges that are large across the state. So of course, that taxable value then gets turned into tax revenues. The board adopts a tax rate that then results in tax revenues. We do our best to be very conservative and keep taxpayers in mind in that tax rate. So you can see here, even though we're the third highest taxable value, we are the fifth highest in terms of tax revenues. So we are, we are not just simply maxing that out to where one could if we wish to, but we do try to be thoughtful with that tax rate. And there'll be more comparisons here right here on the actual tax rate itself. Because so this is the piece of that formula that the board adopts is the tax rate. Appraised values get set for the, by the appraisal districts. And then this board adopts the tax rate. And so appraised values times the tax rate is what ultimately generates the revenue. So this is the piece that the board chooses. And here we are currently the 11th lowest tax rate among the 50 community colleges at 10.78 cents. And again, later on, when I get to the details of the FY24 proposed budget spoiler alert, we are proposing to lower this tax rate for next year. Part of this picture is also tax exemptions. So here, right, these are some of the tax exemptions that again, we as a taxing entity elect to choose on the homestead exemption. So on the homestead exemption, out of the 50 community colleges, about 13 offer this exemption at all. The remainder do not offer this exemption. So we are among the 13 that offers this exemption. But you can see here that among that 13, we are not at the top 20% level. We are at around 1%. I guess I'm going to keep previewing what's later on, but here too, we do also have a recommendation to increase the homestead exemption up to 8% total. So that'll be an increase from the 1%. We also have disabled and over 65 exemptions. So here we offer a $75,000 exemption there. And you can see we are about towards the the high end of exemptions among the 50, but within that group at the high end, we're in the middle range at that level of exemption. So that's sort of the property taxes picture on tuition and fees. So here we are the 23rd lowest in the district. And we have been moving up in our rankings. That has been a policy choice. We raised tuition and fees this past fall and the board has already approved increasing them again this coming fall. And some of that is keeping in mind where the property taxes have been, right? That revenue source has been growing for us and we want to keep a good balance and mix diversification among the different revenue sources.
Can you, can you go back to the previous slide on the exemptions and just explain why that's not related to what's going on with the state or the correlation between our exemptions and what's, what's happening at the state level?
Yes. So at the legislative session, there sort of just wrapped up. There had been a discussion of exemptions because the state was talking about sort of phrase buying down property taxes to try to give taxpayer relief. Those discussions has been around either lowering the overall tax rate or increasing exemptions, either direction, both intending to give taxpayer relief. But that conversation really at the state has been focused on the tax rates of the ISDs, independent school districts. Their tax rates are, I think, always, if not almost always over a dollar. Tax rate, whereas ours is 10.78 cents compared to ISDs are always over a dollar. So the state conversation debating making a homestead exemption mandatory or just lowering the total tax rate has really been focused on the ISD's tax rate. And at this point in time, it's not impacting us. So switching back to tuition and fees, right, there has been, it's in board policy, the board has a policy to try to balance, to try to equalize how much revenues as a proportion we get from taxpayers versus from students. And there has been a goal to try to increase the share that students contribute towards our overall revenues. And so that has been what's been behind the recommendations and the decisions to increase our tuition and fees. So this coming fall, our tuition fees, this is for 12 semester credit hours, will be $1,236. That that aspect has already been adopted by the boards this past March. You will see, you do see that does bring us to about the state median. So here in future years, we are definitely going to want to have discussion around this tax rate to also make sure we stay balanced with what other community colleges are charging for their tuition and fees. So this is the in district rate. On the out of district rate, we have consistently for several years now been among the highest. We are the third highest. The philosophy here has been that we don't want our local taxpayers subsidizing out of district students. So with our local property taxes comprising almost 50% of our revenues, that does result in a sort of significant gap between what we would charge in district versus out of district. And that is one of the things driving this is that we do have a large tax base that is providing a significant support towards our operations that are at a district rate is among the highest. And similarly for the out of state, a similar concept applies here. Dual credit, this is a new chart I haven't included in prior years. So wanted to compare this. We have been charging $26 a credit hour for dual credit for some time now, for as long as I certainly I can remember, we've been charging $26 a credit hour. So this year, again, this is something the board already approved. We are increasing it to $40 a credit hour. But you can see here currently at the 26, we're the 12 lowest. So it does look like that ranking will move up, but we are still, would still be below the state median. And certainly here, the state funding model is going to be changing. So I think we're going to need at least another year or two, even just to fully understand and appreciate how the changes in the state funding model will impact dual credit decisions.
Just for clarification for the board, so we did raise or we are raising or you approved raising dual credit and to $40 an hour. So that's 120 a class. Other non, other non dual credit students are paying 309, is that the 309 a class? Dual credit is a still a great bargain for dual credit students in district and out. So what we've been doing though is we've been subsidizing dual credit and we are, we have about 20,000 students who will have maybe 21,000 this fall, which is good, but they need to pay their, we, we've, we've been under market by design to try to attract students. So we're there now and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think we, and we didn't think we could continue that, that path. So we've had, we've had some questions about raising it, but it's just a great bargain. No, no matter how you take a look at it, it's a great bargain.
So here this does show, and I mentioned this early, earlier on property taxes, and I'll probably, I might mention it one more time on a upcoming slide here. But here in fiscal year 22, you can see we were the eighth highest in terms of how much of our budget is supported by property taxes. And this is at 46%. In this current FY23 budget and in the proposed FY24 budget, this percentage increases. And it goes up to 49%. And this is where in future years, I want us to be very cautious personally. As CFO, be cautious about not letting this really get above 50% just in terms of our vulnerabilities as a college to changes in the real estate market, residential, commercial, what have you. For that to be such a large share of our revenues, changes there then have much more significant impacts on our operations. So it's definitely been a blessing for our operations, especially during COVID, but something I think we also need to be mindful of as well.
A little background for trustee Broussard, back in 16, 17, 18, the board, we had discussions about leveling out the, what students would pay. It's a percentage and what taxpayers would pay. And our original thinking would be 35, 36, 37% equally. But between COVID, where enrollments dipped a little bit and then assessed value, now it's completely, it's just out of whack right now for that formula. That's something I think in the future, we just need to talk about what, what the philosophy might be. I agree with Jennifer. We've been talking about this. Once you get up around the 50, if we have any kind of recession or anything, we've got, we're going to have a problem. We'll have a challenge. It's a problem, but it's a challenge. So we, we want to be careful about that. So we've been trying to balance this, this tuition issue and what taxpayers are paying. And so one reason we've been raising tuition, number one, we were below where we thought we should be. But number two, we were trying to equalize that. So we're not. We wanted students to bear their share of it, but it's just a discussion, I think, that the board with the administration needs to have about what, what you want to do going forward, what you see and have a realistic goal on this.
So a lot of that is on the revenue perspective. On the expenditure side, briefly here, we are in some of this data, in order to have it across all 50 community colleges, of course, does get a little bit out of date. So this is fiscal year 21 expenditures. But there we have been definitely on the low end as of 21, the 11th lowest in terms of expenditures per student. So here it's full-time student equivalent is that FTSE. And there we've been in 21, our expenditures was at $11,800 per full-time student equivalent. So you can see where, where we had been significantly below the state median and what we have been spending per student. So again, that was meant to just sort of help us put the college in context of where we sit among the 50 community colleges to give that, to give that sense of where we are as I present the budget here for fiscal year 2024. Every budget does include assumptions, right? So it's a plan for next fiscal year. And the fiscal year does run September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024. Is this is the budget year we're talking about. So for the principles or for the assumptions here, certainly we try to be conservative in our estimates of revenues and expenses. But we try to balance that with, right? If we're too conservative, then that's also operations that that impacts. So currently where we are on enrollment, and this is notable because since COVID, we have been only assuming flat enrollment in each of our budget cycles. So this is the first year that we are proposing a target of 3% growth in enrollment for this upcoming fiscal year. And within the five-year plan, that 3% does continue in future years. So that is a notable change since, since COVID began. Obviously, we, we do certainly want to maintain our triple A rating. And we also want to maintain a 16 to 20% reserve. And I will give more additional recommendations on the cash reserve towards the end of this presentation. So other assumptions included here, of course, is the tuition and fees that the board has approved for next year. Right? But we, it's still an estimate as we take those tuition fees on the estimated enrollments to generate that, that revenue for the budget on property taxes, right? I've mentioned, we are proposing a few changes here, both for consideration for taxpayers, but also consideration, like I said, not letting that percentage of our revenues getting too high. So there first on the homestead exemption, I showed the earlier slide where we are among the 13 offering that exemption, but we are currently at 1%. The proposal there is to increase that by 7% and it'll be to a total of an 8% homestead exemption. Is the proposal and assumption we have made in the budget. I will mention at the regular board meeting later this evening, there is a board agenda item related to that, that recommendation. The board would need to vote on that change if you wish to accept that recommendation by the end of June is the deadline following the state process for that decision from the board. But that is the recommendation on homestead exemption. The additional recommendation and assumption that has been built into the proposed budget is to lower our overall tax rate from 10.78 cents to 10.76 cents. So that assumption has been built into the budget. Now that actual tax rate does not get voted on or approved by the board until this fall. There's two or three separate actions required of the board for setting tax rates that will occur in September and October. But this is the proposal and assumption included in the proposed budget.
Just very briefly, I just want to make sure the rest of the board knows that even with the homestead exemption proposal and lowering the tax rate, we also have enough funding to pay down the debt, $12 million, which is so in the proposals we have, again, it's a tax reduction. It's an increase in the exemption and it's a pay down the debt by 12 million. So we're in excellent financial shape and able to do that. So it'd be our GO, it'd be our general obligation bond. Correct?
Yes, the general obligation.
And remember, we paid some of those down. We've been, is refunded some of those. And even last year, when we adjusted the tax rate, the INS, I don't know what we, I don't know how much money we saved last year.
Last year, so in general, our required annual payments are around 60 million. That's the minimum we are required to pay on our debt. Last year, we paid an additional, we, and we are this year, an additional 18 million.
Right, last year.
In early debt payments.
So that's 60 plus 18, roughly 60 plus 18 last year, and then 60 plus 12 this coming year, based on the budget proposal.
Chair Soma, if I may. Trustee Soma. It goes without saying that when we reduce our debt, we reduce our interest expense.
Yes.
Short term, long term.
Yes, it will over the whole time period of the bonds, it will result in interest savings. So that's on taxes. Our third largest funding source at around 20% is state funds. And I mentioned this year at the legislative session, they have really completely changed the state funding model for community colleges. And we are still learning and understanding how this new funding model is going to work. The bill, I believe, has complete, has passed its HB8. But the coordinating board itself still has some work to do to actually set the implementation rules around that new allocation. So when you see some, some charts here coming up, that is much more of an estimate this year than it has been for prior legislative sessions in the amount that we expect to receive from the state.
It's just, I mean, she just said it. Right now we have a range. I got a note today going, the initial number they gave us is probably the accurate one. So we've gone back and forth by a couple of million dollars the last couple of weeks. We'll see, maybe next week, maybe, maybe not. So anyway, we budgeted conservatively though. We're, we're looking at the lower number. Regardless though, we're going to, in the two previous, where the last biennium, we received an additional 4 million a year, which put us up to 82, 85 million a year from the state. This year it will go up, we think, maybe to 91, 92. It'll be at least 7 million in additional money. That which will put us up to about 91 or 92 million. So anyway, no matter how it comes down, we're benefiting from the new model. I'll just say that. But that, that could be 7 million, it could be none, either one of them are good. We'll see.
So those are the most significant revenue assumptions we have made in this proposed budget on the expenditure side. And that's where I spend several slides here is going through the details of what budget initiatives we are proposing. But the two most significant items in terms of size impacting our proposed expenditure budget for next year is first compensation adjustments and personnel, right? At 70% of our overall budget, that is typically our number one expense each year as in the budget. The second item, our COVID initiatives moving to our operating budget. So we had right during COVID, several new initiatives that we started in response to COVID. And at the time we paid for that with the COVID funds that we received from the federal government in those three stimulus bills. Those funds are coming to an end. And of course, these initiatives that we started, we would like to continue. So fiscal year 2024 is the year that we need to pick up the cost of those onto our operating budget in order to continue those. So those two items are the primary significant drivers of increases in our expenditure budget for next year.
Jennifer, before we leave that slide, for the, honestly, the sake of redundancy, in case someone didn't get it, this proposed budget lowers taxes. It lowers taxes. That's a big deal. That's a huge deal. So to every taxpayer in our district. And I just can't say enough, again, on your, you and your team's fiscal responsibility, it's just above and beyond be able to manage the finances where we can give back to taxpayers. Not only do they get a quality education, but they're getting at a lower price. And that's a good deal either way around. So I just have to emphasize that in case someone, you know, was kind of dozing off out there. This is a lowering of taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the proposed budget, this will be our cover for the book next year. So first to go through the sources of funds, and I just went through the assumptions. So here, and like I said, some of this, I do reiterate some of these thoughts a few times throughout this presentation. This shows the mix of our revenues, right? Property taxes is our largest revenue source. Student revenues from tuition and fees is our second largest and our state funds is our third largest. And this is where you can see I mentioned, right? I gave that spoiler earlier on that property taxes in next year's proposed budget is at 49% of our budget. And that has certainly been this growing gap between that percentage of revenues coming from students and from taxpayers has grown. And obviously that's been in the opposite direction of where we, we intended it to go pre-COVID. So that is something for us to continue to discuss what policies we want in future years around these two revenue sources.
Jennifer, while we're here, I mentioned to a couple of board members yesterday that one, one major college has now reduced their state appropriations to 14%. And I think over the, over the next couple of years, Lone Star ought to be talking about as a percentage, the amount of money may not be reduced, but as a percentage of our budget, if we take off, like I think if we take off like I think we're going to, and by the way, I think right now for this summer, we're up, currently, we're up nine percent. For the fall, we're up twelve percent. And so that's still early. But I think we've got so much growth coming in the future that we just need to be thinking about what the state appropriation is going to be. I'm expecting it to just be reduced down to Austin Community College has theirs at fourteen percent, which is probably lower than we want to be. But we just need to be thinking about in the next five years, it may be reduced to down nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, somewhere. I don't think it's going to stay at twenty percent of our budget, and I don't think it's going the other way either. So I just, and we can't tell. The state's in great shape right now, but we can't tell, so.
Yeah, thank you. As a follow-up to that, if the state funding goes down, then that'll put pressure on local taxes and student to go up?
Yes, I mean, that's, yes. And so I think with the influx of money from the state now, what we're being told right now is that we can't count on that kind of, I mean, we knew that already. You can't count on that kind of influx. You've seen what happens with the ISDs when they buy down the tax rate. And then two years later, the tax rates are going back up again. And that's where we're going to be faced with over the long term. I mean, there's, outside of the state, there's only two major, we don't get enough money from the federal government or grants really to make a big difference in our budget. So it's local taxes and students. Then, so what we've been struggling with is we don't want to price students out of this. But, I mean, we're all taxpayers here too, so there's some, the balance in there. I think it's an ongoing conversation and making sure that we're communicating with the public what it is we're trying to do here and what we're struggling with. I don't think everybody understands that. They think, well, we're paying enough in taxes already, but you do want an educated student. I mean, it's a balance in there. I think also, I mean, overall, we just need to be efficient. We need to be very efficient at what we're doing and make sure that we're not spending anything we don't need to be spending, I'll say that. And I don't mean, you know, go overly conservative, but just make sure that what we're doing, there's some return on the dollar for that going forward. So I think I'm not the economic expert in Texas, but we're at a high watermark for Texas, that's for sure, in terms of the budget that they have and the surplus that they have right now. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I think, so.
So some more detail on each of these three revenue sources. First, on property taxes. Here, the preliminary estimate that we've received from the appraisal districts is an eleven point one percent growth in that taxable value. There, within the budget, so we've assumed that growth to be at ten percent because it's preliminary values, and we just rule of thumb each year do kind of shave off about a percentage off of that, again, to have conservative revenue estimates for next year. But eleven point one percent, you can see last year at seventeen point nine, next year at eleven point one, we are seeing significant growth rates in the certified values in our area. The red, right, that's Harris County, and then we have Montgomery County. Montgomery does continue to grow as a percentage. It kind of grows about just shy of one percentage point worth of our share. So it's close to about thirty percent now, where five years ago was around twenty-five percent of our area. But Harris County still at seventy percent is the most significant portion of our taxing area. So, right, appraised values times the tax rate. Again, that's the rate that the board adopts is what results in our tax revenues. So here, you can see that about ten years ago, we had, Lone Star College had lowered the tax rate a few times. And then we've been at ten point seven eight cents for, I think, six or seven years. We've kept that rate flat for several years now. And this is where I've mentioned that for fiscal year 2024, we are proposing to lower the tax rate to ten point seven six cents. To give a longer history on the tax rate, here's this chart to show. I mentioned about ten years ago, we did do a few years' worth of lowering that tax rate. It looks like, right, back around fiscal year 2010, it went up for a few years, and then the college brought it back down, and we have kept it steady there. But again, we have continued to keep it well below the state average tax rate. So on student revenues, here you can see for the FY24 budget, we've estimated almost a hundred and forty million in revenues. This is the first year since COVID that we have now grown past where we were, sort of kind of the high mark there in fiscal year twenty was the hundred and twenty-seven million, and we dropped from there, and that was from the enrollment drops. So this is, next year is the first year that we're having these revenues be above where we were. But keep in mind, that includes two years' worth of increasing tuition and fees. So that is not coming from enrollments. While right now, it looks like we've hopefully turned a corner on growing enrollments. We are not yet back to where we were pre-COVID in terms of our credit hours, and I believe headcount as well. So on the state funds, I mentioned, we're still learning what this new formula funding looks like, which is why I gave it a whole different color. Because prior years, it's been comprised of three components. Contact hour funding, student success funding, and core operations was always a very small sliver of that. From what I'm hearing of this new formula funding, about twenty percent of it may still be contact hour funding and the balance in outcomes-based metrics, so similar to the student success, but it is going to be different metrics than what has been previously used. So I do hope next year, I've learned enough about how the new formula works to not have it be in purple, to have it be broken out by its different components once we have better visibility into what those components are. But this is where you see, we are estimating eighty-nine million next year. And that is with, like Dr. Head said, there's about, there was about two point five million that literally just two days ago I had included in here, and then I heard something new, and I took it out. And now it sounds like from news this morning, maybe we can add it back in. So we're definitely still.
I don't know, I'd leave it where it is.
We certainly didn't want to change these slides again. But yes, so there is definitely a larger question mark around the state funds than there have been from prior legislative sessions as we gain a better understanding of the new formula.
I do think what's going to happen in the future, the red indicates student success points, and those are going away. So instead, we have performance outcomes. It's kind of the same thing, except you'll be able to break it down over what we're getting for dual credit, what we get for transfers, what we get for completers, what we get for adult learners. That's the way the budget's going to be broken down going forward. I like it, I mean, I was on the committee, the commission, but I like that look of it so that we know what the goals are. I mean, that's the reason that we got into this to begin with. They're going to give additional funding and for workforce programs and different graduates in the programs. And so credit and non-credit, so we'll be able to break that down. It'll be a little more complicated, I think, but once we, and we'll be one of the, and she's on the, she was appointed to be on the, kind of the rulemaking, the financial piece of this. But once we get it and get it in our system and get our, we'll get our system set up so that we're working toward, which we already were anyway. We just need to get it formulaized so that we can plug it in there so that you, so we can see it, so that you can see it. I think it's going to help us, and then that'll help the colleges to decide what their priority is. It's a system, and then the colleges will know what we're working on, so.
So especially since this current budget year, and again, in this proposed budget, we have also been doing early debt pay downs, right? Prepayments on our debt service. I wanted to share this chart. It's a new chart from prior years showing this is our principal balance, our outstanding debt at the end of each fiscal year. So you can see, of course, there's three points in time, 2016, 2017, and 2022, where our outstanding balance went up because we issued the voter-approved bonds from 2014. We did that in three separate series, those three years. So that's why you see it go up in those years. But at this point in time, that four hundred and eighty-five million, we have issued all of it. So right now, all of the voter-approved debt has been issued. So there are no plans right now for this outstanding balance to go up. From here, it's paying it down. And as I mentioned, the annual minimum payments are around sixty million. But where we find opportunities to pay some debt early, we would like to do so, right, to just further increase the financial strength here. So this current year, it was eighteen million that we paid down, and the proposal for next year is twelve million on top of the minimum required payment.
Do you know, off the top of your head, if we had no more debt, how long would it take off to pay, how long would it take us? I don't know why I'm looking at you more, I'd like you should know, or Diane.
If we had no more, what do you mean, if we had more debt?
If we don't take on any more debt, how long would it take us to pay that off?
It's what?
I mean, I can do the math, but is it twenty-five years?
Yes.
It's like a mortgage.
But of course, it declines, the annual payment does decline over time. So I want to say the weighted average maturity left on all of our debt is around twelve years. But even with that decline, yes, it's about another twenty-five years.
One of the, and one of the upcoming meetings, when Clarence Greer comes back in, he's got charts that lay that out over kind of where we're going to be. They're really good, I think. It helps you to kind of get a grip on, then he's got comparisons to what everybody else owes around us. And I don't, I'm sitting here today in 2023, but I don't, I don't see us needing another bond until maybe twenty-thirty or something like that. We've got so much capacity to grow right now. We've got space, we've got online, we've got Fridays, we've got weekends, we've got nights, and we've got afternoons. As we, we'll be able to tell of the momentum builds, but I just don't see that some big indebtedness. I know other ISDs are doing that, but that doesn't translate necessarily into what we're doing. So keep in mind that we offer over nine thousand, almost ten thousand sections every semester. And so we've got low class sizes. I mean, there's different ways to increase our enrollments without adding additional hard space, so.
So for the fiscal year 2024, recommended budget, to really throw a couple of slides of numbers at you. First, here's the revenue budget. The current fiscal year 2023, the budget adopted by the board was four hundred and twenty-two million in revenues. Our current forecast is at four hundred and twenty-one point nine. So, I mean, really, only, right now, we're only forecasting about a hundred thousand dollar difference from what was budgeted. But based on the assumptions and estimates that I've just walked through in terms of the revenue sources, we're looking at revenues next year of four hundred and sixty-one million. So that is an additional, that's thirty-nine million in new revenues coming in next year. Now, this current year's budget, this past, last August, the budget that the board did adopt did include a planned use of reserves, right? And that's a one-time thing, so it does need to be covered. So that is the first thing that really has to come off the top of any new revenue. So that really leaves us with about thirty-five million in new resources to allocate in next year's budget. And you'll see here, we are proposing new budget additions of about thirty-eight million. And I will go through the detail of those. But you see, that number is higher than the thirty-five million in new resources. So this does, again, have another planned use of reserves of three point six million. And that is something we are working towards each year, reducing that amount of planned use of reserves with a goal of eliminating that. So that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side of the budget, that's where we have a total revenue budget of four hundred and sixty-one million. Then you see all the way on the bottom right, the recommended expenditure budget is four hundred and sixty-five million, which results in what I just mentioned, that three point six million use of reserves. But what I like to show here is that, right, it's not really all one big bucket. We do have separate funds that we do different activities out of. Now granted, the vast majority of it is in the one bucket of the operating fund. So that's the main fund most people think of and utilize on a day-to-day basis. But we do have other funds, this student activity fund, for example. That fund, though, those activities, we have moved that fee, we've eliminated that fee and rolled it into general tuition. So over time, those activities will be moved into the operating fund. But for now, we're going to continue to utilize the resources in that fund. We have a technology fund. But in particular, I want to mention Fund Twenty and Twenty-Four. So Fund Twenty-Four is our auxiliary private business tenants, and I've mentioned this a few times in my monthly financial reports, that this past September, we sold buildings nine and ten over at University Park, and that was the bulk of that fund. So, but we built it for this fiscal year, assuming they were not sold, because it wasn't actually closed yet, and I personally did not want to jinx it either. So this, next year, fiscal year 2024, is the first year of us building a budget with those buildings sold. So that's where you see that reduction there in that expenditure budget. Also of note is the auxiliary fund twenty, though. So that auxiliary fund is an important resource for us, because we use it towards scholarships for students as well as employees. We use it for convocation, the employee award ceremony. We use it for memberships at chambers. So it is an important resource for us, but the revenues in that fund come from bookstore commissions, food services commissions, vending, those types of business-type revenues that have been declining for quite a long time now. Even pre-COVID, they were declining. They fell off a cliff during COVID. We've been able to support this fund with the COVID funds, reimbursing for lost revenues. With that coming to an end, we have this year had to cut a million dollars out of the auxiliary fund budget, which, given that's a smaller-sized budget, definitely was a significant task to figure out what we could cut there. Even with that reduction, we are still about a million dollars short. There is a fund balance, so you can see we're using fund balance there. So that will support us in FY2024. But in future years, we're going to continue to need to make reductions in this fund. So I do want to note that.
We're hoping that once students start coming back and the cafeteria opens, I can't count on it. One, there'll be more money coming out of the cafeteria, although you can't count on that, and then the bookstore. At one time, we had close to nine million in auxiliary funding, nine, till we're down to three point something, right now, so you see some of the challenges that we're facing. I mean, we can deal with it, it's just a matter of we're moving money into operating where we need to, and some of the things we're just reducing, reducing to contributions.
Chair Soma, could I jump in for a minute?
Trusty Sova.
Thank you. This is not a challenging question, but walk me through the rationale of spending fund balance, kind of savings account money, if you will, on these two funds when they look like they continue to be recurring expenses, even though they might be in another category.
Right, so on the student activity fund fourteen, that one especially, the current funds in that fund, we are not allowed to spend it on anything other than student activities. So the thought is, we are going to basically spend that fund down until it's exhausted, and then have the student activities operations shift over to Fund Ten. So the overall support level for student activities will remain the same. It's just a transitionary period between fourteen onto ten. So there, the operational level of student activities will not be changing, just what fund the operations occur out of.
I think that's important to say out loud. And thank you.
Yes, student activities in particular, that level, that level of activities, operations are not changing. It is the Fund Twenty where the level of operations that we are able to conduct out of Fund Twenty is changing. Right, that context is, as Dr. Head said, over, you know, six to eight years ago, we were at nine million dollars in revenues there, and now we're at two million. So that one is a more significant operational impact.
On the student activity funds, though, the reserves were built up because we had money there, but not everybody spent their money every year. So we just put it in a reserve, kind of the rainy day fund, basically. But so as a result of COVID, we've got a rainy day, and then making the transition to move that over into operating, we wanted to. We want to spin out of that, we want to, uh, you're going to delete that account or drain that account down to zero, right? And then we'll move it over into operating.
Okay, so that's fourteen, but what about twenty? Because we'll still have need, needs don't go away there, right? Or do they?
We, we are, that is where, since there is a fund balance, uh, we, the reserves in that fund, we are using that to give us just additional time to continue to wind down operations as we're able to. So like I said, it, this current fiscal year twenty-three's budget in the auxiliary fund uh twenty was about um, three to three and a half million. Um, uh, and I'm sorry, it was higher than that, and we have made significant cuts to items. So we are reducing our level of operations in that fund. Um, it's just taking some time for us to work through the actual operational changes to accommodate that and sort of get used to that. So that's where we've made large reductions this year. And I expect us to need to make another round of large reductions next year to get us back into a balance within that fund.
You see any of that going to ten?
Uh, some of it, uh, we're just making sure we're being cautious in what we move to ten and what we just simply need to stop doing.
Okay, just from my perspective, I'm just one guy here. Uh, I think what Lone Star has a history of doing in the community is really important. The memberships, the events, the sponsorships, name recognition, all of that is who Lone Star is. And I certainly think it's priority going forward. I'll leave it at that.
Um, and I believe there too, right, there's even some conversations with the foundation on the scholarship side because scholarships certainly cannot move to operating. Uh, so there, at some point, they will either need to be reduced or we're seeing what the foundation might over time be able to pick up.
I think also, uh, what we're seeing from the state of the new model is, I think we're going to pick up maybe four million dollars in uh, T E O G money and uh, and actually our T P A C money is going to increase because our tuition went up. So we're going to have more money, maybe six or seven million dollars, maybe more than that, available for new student aids, which we've been using some of the auxiliary money, just so you'll know, to help students periodically. And uh, what we need to do is get them to apply for financial aid so that we can give them the the state funding or the local funding, either one, instead of using auxiliary money. It's just a, I mean, we've been in really good shape over the last couple of years, but it's just after COVID, when we're losing income from the bookstore and the cafeteria, then it's a, you're okay on the time. We've got just a few more slides, maybe three slides, something like that.
Uh, yes, uh, so, yes, the rest of this is now I want to go through what we're adding in new budget initiatives. Uh, and we do have it grouped by our strategic priorities. Uh, with uh, culture and academic and workforce program quality being the largest strategic priorities that we are allocating additional funds to. So by those categories, first, in the academic and workforce program quality uh section, uh, the largest item is we are making a large increase, uh, relatively speaking, to our repair and replacement budget. So this is continuing to, as our facilities age, uh, right, Dr. Head mentioned, we don't expect to need a new bond for some time. Now, we don't need new space, but we need to keep our existing space uh in good condition. So we're growing that fund. Um, we do already have new facilities from the two thousand and fourteen bonds that are still being completed. So we need to fund those facilities. Uh, I also.
This is new money. We're talking about new money here. So overall, we've got, we already have about six million in the R and R money, that much? Five billion, so, I mean, uh, just think about this, you, that that's a lot of money we're spending on R and R, but it's like your house. And so North Heroes is fifty years old, Kingwood is forty years old, Tom Ball's thirty years old, Montgomery's almost thirty years old, though. Um, if you want a house, you know what I'm talking about, so.
Yeah, the whole thing is about nine million, and that might sound like a large amount, but I still think over time, we're going, we should grow that more. We have five million square feet of facilities across the entire system. Uh, so I I do think over time, we should think about continuing to grow that to keep everything in good shape. Um, we also have a growth and performance contingency, so that's tied specifically to the revenue assumption of enrollment growing by three percent. Right? That is an assumption and it's target. This allows us to, if we hit that target and we grow, then there are funds uh for the campuses and system office departments to help fund that growth. So it can be allocated out in the fall uh when and if that growth occurs. But it also gives us a cushion in case it doesn't. Uh, so that is the primary thought behind that growth and performance contingency. Um, and again, so then there's academic equipment replacement, just like repair and replacement of our facilities. We have workforce equipment, academic equipment that all also needs to be replaced over time. Uh, so you can see this full list here. Uh, I do, yes.
You might let the, I, for your presidents, the academic equipment replacement is a new addition. So we were getting a lot of input from the campuses that um, we've been growing so much over the last couple of years that we needed not only workforce equipment, but academic, like microscopes, for example, and other equipment that you use in the classroom. So what happens, though, is we budget for that and then the budget, the numbers are distributed out to the campuses. So we've got a, we need to develop a process over how that's going to be, but um, we're, we're not sitting on that money at the system office thinking, well, we're going to do that. We'll get a list from the campuses and then we, we farm it out to them, so.
So within the culture strategic priority here, of course, the main item here, as it consistently is, is compensation increases. The proposal here is a four percent increase for full-time and part-time staff and a two-dollar increase for adjuncts. Uh, that would be effective September first. So that is, I mean, you see, that's um almost the entirety of this fifteen million for this culture category. Additionally, under financial responsibility, another item that this current year's budget FY twenty-three was the first time I included is the non-personnel inflation contingency. I'm including that again, especially, I mean, while inflation has come down some, it's still much more significant than it has been in decades. Uh, so continuing to plan for that, that also would get allocated out to all the campuses and departments to, for the non-personnel portion of their budgets. So for the goods and services that we purchase, right, it just with inflation, it simply costs more to buy the same stuff. Uh, so that's what that would be for. Um, the other thing to note underneath that, uh, institution contingency, and we put in parentheses state. I mentioned that the state revenues have a much more significant question mark around it than they have in prior times. So the thought here was to budget a cushion um, in case those revenues do not even come in at where I'm estimating, we're estimating them in this proposed budget. If they do come in, then these are funds that we can decide how to utilize, uh, but to give that cushion.
Just for, just for clarification, since there's adjuncts probably watching. So the agreement was that we would do four percent across the board for everybody. I know it's about two dollars, but you, did you say, you said two dollars, right?
It, yes, I said two dollars, uh, it, which is four percent. Um, the four percent came out to a dollar ninety-nine.
Okay.
So rather than increase it to a dollar ninety-nine.
That's fair, okay.
Uh, around two dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, so yes, it is roughly four percent.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Um, insurance every year, that's a significant, it, that goes up the cost every single year. Finally, under student success, so if you've seen there's some asterisks next to some of these things, that's where I'm kind of marking those items that were COVID initiatives. Online is uh one of the main ones, and you see the majority of these COVID initiatives. While some have been spread out in other categories, majority fall under student success. Are the major initiatives we started in response to COVID. So online being probably the most significant of those initiatives. Uh, that's five million dollars, right, that up until this point, we've already kicked this off, but it's been funded with COVID money. So to continue it, now we need to pick that up on our operating budget. Uh, tech connect, so the ability for students to check out devices i- is another item uh that we're adding to the budget. So in total, budget initiatives here is fifty point five million. But I didn't want to break that down because it certainly sounds like it is a large number. Uh, but so there, twenty million of that between the non-personnel inflation contingency and compensation increases is really driven by inflation, and that's a four point seven percent increase on our current year's budget for inflation. That six point five million is the cost of the COVID initiatives moving to operating, right? So that's where uh both online, tech connect, a lot of these things were things that were discussed prior to COVID. But we just simply at the time didn't have the money or the major need to jump into those initiatives uh it so quickly as we did. But of course, COVID, we had to make those significant changes to our operations to, in response to that. Uh, so that's six point five million and then another twenty-three million, which is about five point six percent. Uh, uh, increase uh from this current year's budget in these new budget initiatives. So that's fifty point five million. Uh, but as we do every year, of course, we also scrub the budget every year for any items that are no longer needed to be offsets to any new budget initiatives. Uh, so you see here, right, we have the University Park, Buildings Nine and Ten, uh, those expenditures that we're reducing. Um, other contingencies, right, you see throughout this, to be conservative in our budgeting, we put in contingencies, but we go through and scrub them w- when they're not used, when they, we find that they're not needed, uh, we are able to take those reductions uh in, in the budget. Uh, there are certain things that we thought about doing, then did not do, for example, a contact center. Um, energy efficiency projects, I know that's the smallest item here, but in total, it's twelve million dollars worth of budget reductions. So that of the fifty point five point six million of new initiatives, really, the, the net budget increase is a thirty-eight million dollar uh increase. Um, and when you factor in that inflation, right, nominally, that's a nine point one percent increase in our expenditure budget. But if you factor out the inflationary costs, then the, the real increase in terms of real dollars is a four point three percent increase in our expenditure budget in this fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Second to last slide, I promise, uh, because now that mentioned on the impact of all of this on cash reserves. Uh, so, right, I said this current fiscal year and in this proposed twenty-four budget, it does include a use of reserves, which, which does mean that budget's not balanced, right? Our expenditure budget is higher than our revenue budget. We don't want it to stay that way. It does need to be balanced. Uh, the benefit of a strong cash reserve balance is it does give us the benefit of time to adjust our operations and get there. So with our uh very healthy cash reserve balance, the first goal we'd like to achieve with that is to spend it down over time um, to get ourselves to a more balanced budget with a goal of having it balanced by fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The second proposal we'd like to make with the cash reserves, uh, since they are healthy and we see this on the horizon, is to set aside forty million uh, for uh, in a, we're still figuring out the exact timeframe, but in a few years, we, we are going to need to look at replacing our ERP system, that is the, the most significant IT system uh that underlies the IT infrastructure of the college. Um, and that's usually quite a significant project to undertake. Oftentimes, institution needs, institutions need to use debt to pay for that type of a project. Um, with these healthy reserves, the thought and the recommendation here is to set aside this forty million. That way, when we get there, we won't, hopefully, we will not need to use debt to do that, that we will have these funds already planned for that use. Um, and then, of course, if it does come in less than forty million, we have no shortage of repair and replacement projects. Uh, so to continue to invest in our infrastructure is the recommendation.
Uh, IT system we've had, we funded with bond, which you pay the bonds out for thirty years, your system lasts for a decade, maybe.
So with all these recommendations, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget would have us ending at a cash reserve balance of twenty-seven point eight percent, definitely above our goal of twenty percent, but as I mentioned, we have probably another two, three years to go uh before we hopefully can have our operations a- aligned better so we're not having to rely on this cash reserve. Um, so that, that cash reserve, it, the plan is to have it drawn down back to the twenty percent goal over the next few years.
So uh each percentage point in the current budget would be about four point five million, right?
Yes.
So if you, you could see next year, uh, if, if our goal is twenty, then we're going to have close to thirty beyond. If our goal was twenty, we're going to be thirty on top of that. So the goal, when we put together the five-year plan, which we'll can discuss at another time, but uh, on year five, we're still anticipating to have a twenty percent reserve, more than actually about a twenty-one percent reserve, right, at year five. So. So in a way, we're in excellent shape. We're just, we are, so.
So I appreciate your attention with, for, and uh, giving me this time to give you this detail on the proposed budget, the calendar from here, right? Because on this, there's, there's no vote being taken today. Uh, what happens from here is we continue to put all the sort of the fine points on this and put together the budget, proposed budget book, and we get that to everybody, uh, usually around the third or fourth week of July. It's usually over a hundred pages long, the full budget report, all the line items. Um, that uh includes these proposals. Uh, everyone will get a copy of that, and then it's at the August meeting uh that the board would take a vote on that budget. And if approved, that then becomes the budget come September first. Uh, and then I mentioned in the fall is when the board then actually takes votes to set the tax rate. And that's a very prescribed calendar by the state. We have to wait until we receive the certified values from the appraisal districts. And then the board of has to have votes to propose a tax rate and set a public hearing. And then after that public hearing can then have a vote to actually set the tax rate. But this is the remaining calendar dates for this budgeting process. And again, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Jennifer, Jennifer, this is trustee Peters. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um. Uh, with the, I know you said the adjuncts got, okay, whatever, you know, four percent. What is the uh current paper adjuncts now per hour? Do you happen to know that? What is the current hourly?
Uh. Uh, it's around forty-seven dollars uh, uh, an hour.
Okay.
Per, or, yes.
Uh, okay, now, the other question I had, I know you said that we have one of the highest out of district and out of state uh tuition rates. What I wanted to know is, um, and one of the reasons the rationale was that, so that, uh, because it's, you know, it, it's not fair for them to, um, you know, I guess not, uh, to pay the same that, you know, in district students pay. I, I understand that. Now, what I want to know, what is the percentage of out of district and out of state students that we have? Do you happen to, you know, kind of, you know, roundabout, is it a big number, small, you know?
Um, it's, I want to say relatively small, but I don't know it off the top of my head, so I'm certainly happy to follow up with you with the exact number.
Okay, no, that's okay. I'm just wondering because I did, I know we are about growth at Lone Star and I just didn't want to, you know, I wanted to make sure that we were able to compete with uh out of district and, you know, out of state uh, uh, students who want to enroll at Lone Star in that we don't, you know, out price them. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, just out price them so that they don't want to come here because we're too expensive. But if we don't, if we don't have a large number of them, but I guess that it, it doesn't matter, it's just a small percent. But that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, I will absolutely follow up with that percentage.
We'll, we'll get that for you before the next board meeting. We have all that available.
Yes.
I mean, before this coming board meeting, before the five o'clock meeting, we'll get it, so. We have it right now, right? Okay, okay, we'll get it.
Chair Stoma, could I, I've been asking a lot of questions, I apologize.
Oh, you go ahead.
I have four questions and they're in different areas, so forgive me. Um, to the degree that you can discuss in public, talk about the police department and what we're doing there going forward.
Well, we've, uh, the police department, you said. So, you know, we, when we came to the board back a couple of months ago and we added new officers, Mario, how many, uh, at that time, we had about twenty openings, something like that, twenty? And how many of those have we filled now? How many are still open? So, um, it, it's an ongoing concern, I'll have to tell you, with everything that's going on in the country, we, I mean, they've been pressing this hard, and so, um, we've actually, we're, we're trying to help some of our own, only. own employees come through the law enforcement academy so we can take, I mean, you know, we have our law enforcement academy, we need to add more officers, that's for sure. I think we're okay on the numbers, it's just filling those positions, is that, is that? And everybody else, by the way, I mean, that's, it's, this is kind of like the mental health issue. It's, uh, when, when we did the law enforcement academy, they were all telling us that, as a matter of fact, we're doubling the size of the law enforcement academy, which is a, a good sign, so.
Look, we have our, our eyes on training, equipment.
Yes. Mario, I think, uh, the police department is probably one of the few departments that's gotten everything they've asked for. I mean, we, we made that really clear, tell us what you need to protect us, and so, and be ready and be responsive, and so. I think they have the latest of everything. Is, Mario, if you, if you feel differently, say so. I mean, I mean, I mean, it's probably not a good idea to disagree with me in public, but they don't, they have, uh, but we have been, I I am super, I was the, the police commissioner for years, so I'm, we need the police, I mean, I'm thank you guys. So I'm very supportive of the police department. They get very high ratings in our surveys, very high ratings for their, not only their presence, but it's just the way they carry themselves and the students, I, and I appreciate that. I like a kind of a community law enforcement, but we need them, I mean, so.
My, my question is supportive, not
Yeah.
less. Um, second question, where are we on the online college? And I refer to that as Dr. Keshvala's group, if you will.
It's growing, so keep in mind that the online college and, uh, we're up, I didn't, I saw the numbers today, but I know we're up, what? A lot, okay, well, okay. Thirteen percent, something like that. Yeah, so, um, I, keep in mind that the online college is for only students who are all online, and I have what I think, and keep in mind that before COVID, we had the largest online enrollment, the number, the largest number of students in the entire country among community colleges, with the exception of Ivy Tech, which is not a community college, it's a system. So, uh, we know the students are there, I think that number is going to increase. And, you know, um, keep, what I think is, and and the intent was for online to set the standards for everybody else for that online. So we want consistency and the look of the, so, not the same syllabus, I'm not saying that, but the formatting needs to be the same. So no matter whether you're taking a class from here or there, any place, it needs to be the same. We've got, uh, this online proctoring, which was in the budget, though, that's for everybody, whether you're, whether you're part of that or part or not. So we're using that as kind of the, um, I, I, I think they're the leader among the group in terms of what's going to happen with online. So they're going to be doing the experimenting, they've got the proctoring, we've got other we're, uh, simply as our lead person with, uh, in the state to, we want to offer, be offering these online classes across the state and across the country for us, now we'll get paid for it. So I think you're going to see expansion of that. I just think that, one reason I'm thinking over the, over the, uh, facilities, I, I don't see that with online growing. I think that's going to take some of the pressure off of what would normally be expansion that we would have, and I just don't think we, I just don't, I just don't see it right now. I don't see it on the horizon, so. But I think I'm gonna, I'm not going to be surprised, I thought in a couple of years, we'd have ten or twelve thousand students taking all online, so.
Outstanding. Then one more question and one suggestion. You talked about online college enrollment being up. What campuses are not hitting enrollment goals right now?
Well, budget-wise, we, we budgeted three percent, and I think to be safe, that's where we need to be, that's what we put the budget on. And so in our, in our thinking, though, not only do we have, uh, we have a contingency, if we grow more than that, then we have more money to, uh, push out to the colleges, if they grow more, if, if, uh, well, I'll, I'll pick on Cyfair, Cyfair's enrollments, it's up, if I read the numbers right, sixty-three percent right now, is that correct? I mean, that's crazy, and so that's a good thing. I'm just making sure that's not six point three instead of sixty-three percent. If they grow, then we'll push more money to them when the semester starts. I mean, that's what we do, we have that in a contingency. On the other hand, if they don't grow, we're going to take money away from them. And so, um, and 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 actually, what we've been doing across the system, just because we were all in the COVID thing together, we were taking those cuts across the system proportionally, whatever, if your budget was twenty-three percent of the budget, then we would do twenty-three percent of the reductions, but so, uh, we're shooting for three percent. I think that's what we've counted on in the next five years, right, every three percent every year. What we know is, though, we normally, we're getting a little more than that as, uh, it's what I'll call our market share. If you took a look at the population, we historically have gotten like three point one, three point two percent of the total population. So I, I personally think three is good. If we get more than that, then that's great. If we get less than that, we can handle that, so, uh, I I actually, I think we're going to get more than that, just because of the number of people coming in. I'm like you, I'm looking at all the, not subdivisions, I'm talking about communities that are coming in up to ninety, uh, forty-five, up to forty-nine, up in Magnolia, and I, I see those up in the Kingwood area, all, all the north of there. I, I just think we're going to be at the four for, four or five percent clip, which would be really good, which is what we were beforehand. So, I mean, we had a couple of, a couple of years where we had eight percent, eight and nine percent. So.
Then my suggestion has to do with your ERP. Now, I don't know if this is board action in the future, but you mentioned having a fund for the ERP, uh, project. I like the idea of restricted fund for that. I don't know if that's something the board would agree with, how we do it. But I like that, I'd like to, I'd hate to see that money set aside and, and nibbled away at over time, so.
We were going to work on a proposal for the board, uh, that, that money could not be spent without specific board approval. That would not be just some fund that we want to go to without.
Well, your future rides on it, I'm telling you straight, because I've looked at your systems. I mean, you have to have to have these changes, or you're, you, we can't grow, we just can't do it. So I, I agree with you, there has to be careful consideration there, we need to be safeguards to save those funds, because you cannot afford it, you'll choke yourself to death.
Yeah, what I would, would like to do come August, we'll have, uh, as usual, the board agenda item for the board to consider, uh, adoption of the budget. Also having a separate board agenda item specific to the forty million, that way there can be some parameters a- around that is what I had pictured there.
Good, thank you. You're all on top of it, appreciate it.
And if I could go back to please, trustee Pierce's question, uh, right, just when I think I have all the numbers in my head. The adjunct rate, I know I stumbled on, it is forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents currently, is the adjunct rate, uh, that we're proposing to increase by two dollars. So I did want to circle back on that. Oh, and I'm sorry, one other item, if I could mention too, is, uh, mental health services, I know that has been a focus. Because I unfortunately kind of glossed over that, we are adding another, and this is incremental, additional six hundred and fifty thousand to mental health support, and that'll bring it up to a total of two point nine million for mental health support. Uh, and when I went back and looked, we had actually kicked off increasing this mental health support pri- just prior to COVID, we had actually already kicked it off prior to COVID, and of course, have increased it even further during COVID. So I, I wanted to double back on that because I meant to mention it earlier, um, but I know that has been a important focus for the board.
So, uh, Desiree just sent a note for trustee Pierce, so we have seventeen, that, in the fall of twenty twenty-two, we had seventeen thousand nine hundred students, seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-one students, which were either out of district or out of state, and and we can break that down a little bit. But the out-of-district students, though, are the ones that, um, I mean, it's everything from Katy to Montgomery to Cleveland to Tarkington, it's, uh, Houston ISD, any Huntsville, anybody around us. And we have students from all of those areas. I mean, part of, part of their reasoning for raising tuition in addition to making sure that, uh, everybody, that, that out-of-district people pay their share, whatever that might be. We're trying to encourage some of these ISDs to join our system. And not, we don't want to, we didn't want to be subsidizing them anywhere along the way. So that's, there's some double thinking there, so that's about twenty percent, twenty. Yeah, twenty percent of our total student population is either out of district or out of state. Most of those, though, were in their, in their immediate, in our immediate areas, so. And we are talking to a couple of ISDs about joining with us, but they're going to have to, they're going to have to make that decision and pay the taxes, so.
Any other questions, comments during the budget review workshop? Again, good job. There are no other questions or comments, and at four twenty-three, I adjourn this meeting.